Calling to order, the regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District Board of Education for Tuesday, September 8th. May we have a roll call, please?
Superintendent Wells.
Here.
President Trutain.
Here.
Vice President Duran.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Okay, I'll come back to him. Trustee Hinckley.
Here.
Student Board Member Mala.
Here.
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
We'll move on to item number two on our agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please feel free to join in. Ready, again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all. Thank you. I'll ask our student board members to please read our mission and vision statement and our meeting norms.
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Our meeting norms are to maintain a focus on what is best for our students, ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully, to endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's belief in what is best for students, and to make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their points of view.
Thank you very much, student board members. Ms. Shen, do you want to finish the roll call, please?
Trustee Dos.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead with item five on the agenda, which is Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. There was no action taken in our closed session previous to this open meeting. And that brings us to approval of the agenda. Superintendent or trustees, are there any changes to the agenda that you were requesting now?
President Trutain, I have a request.
Go ahead.
I request that we pull an item from the agenda for tonight, and that is an action item. And that is the action item 14-1.
Would you like to talk for a minute about why you're pulling this item and when it might come back onto the agenda?
Yeah, sure. This item is an item that helped us address Senate Bill 98. I had ATA co-presidents reach out today and wanting to have more, some discussions about the contract as it relates to, more specifically, the assessment and looking at the current assessments we have and some adjustments we have to do in terms of massaging and their capacity to do some of this work. But I think it's incredibly important that we have more conversations with our teachers who are responsible for guiding the work prior to having this on the contract. It may come back in the immediate future in an abbreviated form, but we're having ongoing conversations with our teacher's leader around Senate Bill 98 and how best to address it. One of the good things about this item, and really, really important, is that it would offer pre-, mid-year, and post-assessments at minimum that are standard-based and align with our state standards. And it's important that you have these kinds of uniform assessments along with the writing and writing rubrics so that you don't just have rhetoric about equity here in Albany, but you really have the infrastructure to really engage in meaningful equity work. Equity work starts with good, solid assessments. Absent of that, it just becomes rhetoric. And so, how do you determine what to give kids based on their needs absent of a good guess? And so, removing the guesswork out of it is some of the things that we want to do as we move forward and look forward to engaging in what we call a continuous cycle of improvement. And so, we're having those ongoing conversations. And so, although I'm pulling it today, it may come back soon in a different form or abbreviated form or not at all. And we have something in lieu of this that we do homegrown through some creativity and innovation and the will with our staff and our teachers. So, that's an abbreviated, I would call, Cliff Note version of the item on the, item on the action item today area and our future conversation, ongoing conversation with ATA.
Thank you very much. See no other. Hands up, trustees. Can I get a motion to pass the agenda with the item 14-1 removed?
I move to approve the agenda with item 14-1 removed for tonight.
I'll second.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Trutain.
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That moves us to the funnest part of the agenda, which is our item number seven, Spotlight, the Albany High School Dance Company.
President Trutain, I would like to have the honor of having Cora, the coach of the dance team, to treat us with the biggest treat that we may have had for a beginning-of-the-year opening celebration that I think really exemplify the new norm that we currently experiencing. So, Ms. Baker has been pretty amazing, had us all moving, watching the video. So, at this time, with no further ado, I introduce to you Cora. I just saw her appear earlier, she moved. Where did she go? I'm turning over to you.
All right, thank you so much. It's an honor to be here with you guys tonight. My name is Cara Baker, and I teach dance and PE at the high school. For those of you who are not familiar, Albany Dance Company, or ADC as we call them, is our Albany dance team. In a typical year, they perform at football games, rallies, dance department showcases, and competition. Last February, they performed at the California Dance Educators Dance Festival at El Cerrito High School, not knowing that that would be their last but most beautiful performance of the year. Each summer, ADC spends the week before school starts brushing up on technique and preparing football performances. With no half times to prepare, we decided to create a welcome-back video to get students and teachers excited about the beginning of the school year, 2020 style. After a few days of virtual camp, choreographing and rehearsing their sections only through Zoom, the dancers were ready to shoot the video in small groups, outdoors, masked, and socially distanced, of course. I'd like to thank ADC members Hannah Jaffe, Phoebe McMahon, and Eleanor Reese Hill for volunteering as group leaders, and student Colin O'Brien, who did a tremendous job editing the footage on a pretty tight timeline. So, I think we're going to get to see the video, and we hope that you enjoy it as much as we did creating it.
That was amazing. Thank you so much, Ms. Baker, and for the, and to the entire Albany High School Dance Company for making that and helping make the return to school so enjoyable.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us share it with you tonight.
I hope that we'll have opportunity to see more from ADC in the future.
Absolutely, we are, we are on it.
If I could just add one thing that, you know, the, they say one of the best compliments is when someone tries to imitate you. And those young people moved me so much, I wanted to get out of my chair here and try to copy them. So, thank you so very much, they were beautiful.
Thank you, thank you. That's, that's exactly what we were aiming for, so.
And after that great spotlight, I'd like to move us on to approval of the consent calendar. Trustees, are there any items that you want to discuss individually? Or do I have a motion to pass?
President Trutain, if we can pull item 8-5, the PAO Director of Special Ed. I'd like to have that item pulled and introduced to you and hear the bio and a few words from the candidate tonight.
I see, okay, so let's do that first. Let's go ahead, and Dr. Wells, take the floor.
Yeah, I would turn this over at this time to our executive director, Alexia Ritchie.
Thank you, Superintendent Wells, and Board President Trutain, and all of our trustees that are joining us today, as well as our community. It's my profound pleasure to introduce our recommended candidate for the position as our Director of Special Education, Dr. Cynthia Ortiz-Front. Let me share a little bit about her biography and her background. She has wonderful experience. She spent years as a paraprofessional while an undergraduate student. For 20 years, she has also served as a school psychologist. She's held positions as program specialists and as a Director of Special Education in both district and charter schools. She is a professor, a researcher, and a director, both at the school, university, and in community-based organizations. She was proudly the Director of the Adolescent Treatment Program at Stanford University, as well as the Director and Adjunct Professor at JFK University's School-Based Training Program. Again, we are grateful to welcome Dr. Cynthia Ortiz-Front to Albany Unified School District. And with that, I'd like to hand it over for her own personal welcome to the community.
I can't hear you.
I think you're on mute.
We still can't hear you, you're on mute.
Well, we might get that worked out soon, but I know that I'm going to really work diligently to make sure that the transition is very smooth for Dr. Ortiz-Front. And again, we look forward to inviting her to many upcoming special education meetings, board meetings as well. And once again, we welcome her to our Albany community.
We're going to try it one more time. Dr. Front, can you try again? I guess we have to hear from her another time.
Well, I. Here I am. Oh, there we go. Yeah, I wasn't working on my, my other computer, but I will, I'm here on the iPad, and can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm so sorry about that. You know, this computer, I think it's time to say bye-bye to this computer. First of all, I want to say I am so honored and so excited to be starting my role as the Director of Special Education with the Albany Unified School District. I cannot wait to partner with parents, students, staff, all stakeholders, and move forward, even during this very, very difficult time when we are looking at doing something new every day, learning something new every day. But at the end of the day, we're all here for the students, and this is all about making sure that everyone's going to get their needs met. So, I am truly looking forward to working with all of you, as well as the whole Albany community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Front. Trustees, do you have any quick words of welcome for Dr. Front?
Yeah, I got a couple of quick words. There, there we go, I got. Welcome, Dr. Ortiz-Front, very happy to have you. Very excited for all the work that you're going to do. I am pretty sure that we provide computers for new members of our staff, so don't worry, we're going to get you all set up. But seriously, welcome, very, very happy to have you, glad you decided to come to Albany and look forward to working with you as we move forward to help the students.
What a lovely welcome, thank you so much.
I wanted to welcome you as well, on Dr. Ortiz-Front. I noticed when you started, you said, and you're planning to work with the parents, the students, and the staff. And it was really nice, the order in which that went. It flowed really beautifully. And I know parents in particular are looking forward to working with you. So, welcome to Albany.
So warm and lovely, thank you so very much.
Okay. That, and I also express the same feelings, we are very glad to have you. I want to move ahead with the consent calendar. I also want to welcome a new member to our Citizens Board, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I think we're welcoming Stephen Watkins to that. Thank you very much for your application, we appreciate that. And we appreciate the work that the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee provides. And with that, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I move to accept the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay, Vice President. May we have a roll call, please?
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Trutain.
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Thank you.
President Trutain, before Dr. Ortiz-Front leave, I want to welcome her aboard as a new team member. We have lots of work for you to do. So, we can't wait till you get here so we can dump on you, I mean, give you what the work we need you to do. Welcome, thank you.
So lovely. I pray to God this would be an easy job, and I know God is listening, right? I'm really, really happy to get involved, and I feel like this is a very, very warm community, and I, I'm so grateful. Thank you so much.
Welcome, and we can't wait to start working together. Take care.
Thank you, bye-bye, everyone.
We'll move now to item nine on our agenda, the Superintendent and Board Member Reports. I'm going to jump in front of Dr. Wells very briefly, and I want to mention the fact that the board has been meeting very frequently. We met very frequently last spring, and we've continued that over the summer on our road to reopening schools. We've just, this is our third meeting in the past three weeks, and we had a workshop last Tuesday. And one of the topics of the workshop was how can we run more efficient meetings? Now, the document that comes out of that will come to the board officially at our next meeting on September 22nd. But I think that all of the board trustees, you know, expressed a desire to try to have our meetings run efficiently so that we don't go till midnight or 1:00 a.m., because it's in the interest of students who are, who are listening and participating, and parents who want to hear what's going on in the school district and have a right to be able to hear the meeting and participate at reasonable hour. And, you know, it can also become a burden to our staff, some of whom are involved in the items that we discuss, and our staff who stays with us for the entire meeting, too. So, I just wanted to give you a heads-up that in the future, we're going to hope to run all of our board meetings at a more, in a more efficient way and ending in a timely manner. And that will be my report for tonight, and I will hand it over to Dr. Wells now for his superintendent update.
Thank you, President Trutain. And I also like to add to that report that our student trustees were amazing in giving some really good input and insight from a wonderful perspective that really, really, I think, helped to make a difference in the direction we're trying to move in. So, I want to say a special thank you to both our trust, student trustee Leo Corzo-Clark and trustee Audrey Mala. We really appreciate your work and effort and your unbelievable voluntary hours that you put in to make a difference in your own community. And you really exemplify what a student is like at Albany High. You represent Albany High quite well. So, I was really moved with the thoughtful insight that you guys gave. I didn't want to be remiss to not let folks know how, what you did really made a difference and pushed us along, so thank you for that. The superintendent's report is about to come on the screen in a moment. The first, my first section of my report, I have three areas that I want to focus on really briefly, is that we've been hearing a lot about the elementary school waivers. And just last week, Alameda County announced that they have a waiver process in place, and we've been getting phone calls and communication saying, "Hey, Alameda County has a waiver in place, when you going to open those schools?" And it's not just, "Hey, you open those schools." There's a lot of stipulation involved in that. And I wanted to kind of give some specifics of how this process works. First, a waiver may only be granted if it is requested by the superintendent, myself, to Alameda County Superintendent of Schools. From there, she would look at it and determine whether or not it should be moved on to the Alameda County Public Health. And then, from there, they determine whether or not we meet all the required criteria, and then it goes on to the state, California Department of Public Health, and we need thumbs up there. And that's about a three-week process, or could be longer. I just want to make sure folks know that. My primary reason for moving any potential waiver forward is first and foremost, the safety and well-being of our students and staff and community. And we will be looking at data and science and not politics as we do what's best for our community and our kids. Next, consultation with labor groups. We are required to consult our labor leaders and work with them if we were to pursue the waiver process. We would also have, as I mentioned before, local health officials will review the local data rate of infections, ICUs, and deaths. And then, district must share a return-to-school plan signed, I mean, aligned with guidance from, as I mentioned before, California Department of Public Health. The plan must include how we will implement California Department of Public Health guidelines. And then, how might that be implemented? So, it's not just rhetoric, but how might you implement that along with two key areas? How would we participate in contact tracing? And how would we do ongoing testing of staff? And then, plan may take, as I mentioned before, about three to four weeks to review. Now, as we move the document up, you know, the governor has four phases of colors. The first phase of color is purple, which means it's the worst condition you can be in. More than 8% of the people tested are positive. That means it's widespread. Substantial, orange, five to eight percent positive. And then, moderate, it's considered two to 4.9% positive. And then, finally, minimum, less than 2% positive. Alameda County is widespread, colored purple. We want to be able to make sure we're adhering to guidelines. We do not want to be in widespread, more than 8% positive, high risk. So, I wanted to take a moment to share that with the board and the public about the process. It's not an overnight process. We look at data, we look at science, and we get recommendations and input from both Alameda County Health Department and California Department of Health as well. So, I just wanted to be clear there so that, because I know that we were abuzz last week when the waiver process came out, and we don't have any of our Alameda County School District, Unified School District, participating in this waiver process as of today. My next item is Board Workshop. President Trutain talked about that. I wanted to spend a moment on that just briefly. I thought it was an amazing experience. Board had a chance to pause, reflect, and look at how they might have a more focused, efficient, and timely board meetings. There was a number of issues they considered, one of which is, how do you make it more attractive and sensitive to the community? And a seven-hour board meeting is not something that would be inviting to the community. And so, we're looking at how to have a timely meeting that's reasonable. And so, the questions that the board and, and staff grappled with was, how to create efficient focus and timely board meetings? And that created some wonderful discussions and some recommendations. And on this note about board workshops and the governor's team and running a board meeting, I want to encourage all the board members to support the president as she tries really hard to move the agenda. And so, what that means is sometimes we don't get a chance to ask all the wonderful questions that we need to ask in the board meeting, but we have other venues for that as well. And we talked about that in detail. But my point here is that the board president. And we talked about that in detail. But my point here is that the board president is gonna need to complete board support as she tried to wrap things up and give a minute warning and things of that sort. And it's not an easy job, but she can do it with the support of all our members. So I just wanted to encourage us to do that. And finally, I'm excited about this Thursday night. We have what we call our virtual back to school night with the superintendent for parents guardians Thursday, September 10th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. I want to hear from the parents, some of the appreciations that they have for our remote learning 2.0. I've been getting a number of phone calls, emails, and hearing all these appreciations. I think it'd be great if our educators, our teachers heard about what our parents think about the wonderful work they're doing. We also want to acknowledge that there's some challenges. We want to hear about that. And details on how to join will be emailed and we will have a reminder go out tomorrow. And I'm excited. We want to hear from you as part of my listening tour. I want to hear from the parents as we begin to listen and learn and adjust to make sure remote learning 2.0 is the best experience we can provide for all of our kids. I had a chance, unsolicited, to hear from one of our student trustees about her experience. And I hope she talks about it in her report today about remote learning. It was quite moving and I wish the teachers heard what I heard because they deserve to hear that. President Trutain, that concludes my superintendent report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wells. And so now we'll move to Vice President Duran.
Good evening, everyone. Three items. The first is not the most positive thing, but yes, it is in the sense that this is suicide prevention month. So it serves as a reminder that during this especially difficult time that we are all open to putting our arms virtually around everybody, especially if we feel they're stressed out. In addition to us, it helps us stand taller too when we put our arms around others. So in in light of this being suicide prevention month, just know that we're all vulnerable at different times in our lives and that if we could just remember that reminder. And that was, I was reminded by the disability squad that put Albany's disability squad. And they put out their first newsletter and it popped right up there. So it reminded me that I should make an announcement about it. The second is just once again, another reminder that census, if you haven't completed your census, please fill that out. It's just imperative that Albany and Alameda County gets as much of the money and the services and and our political representation as we can get. And that means everybody has to fill out a census. So please, please do that if you haven't thus far done so. And the last is, once again, I'd like to take this time to class so Matty gracias and gratitude in recognition that Albany sits on the territory of the Wichenee, the ancestral and unceded land of the Chocheño Aloney. This land was and continues to be of great importance to the Aloney people. We recognize that all of us in Albany continue to benefit from the land that we live and work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. We move to trustee Clark.
Thank you, President Trutain. I don't have a report tonight.
Thank you, trustee Clark. We'll go ahead and move to trustee Dos.
Oh, thank you. I just had a few things I wanted to 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 go over during my my report. One thing I wanted to mention is that we we kind of are going into another week of distance learning. And I just wanted to give a shout, another shout out to the teachers. It's been a wonderful experience just watching the students be engaged. And I know that it's not an easy task and technology doesn't always work out our way. But it has been, it's been, it's been great to watch. And, you know, I try, I try and do, you know, as an instructor and step away and let the kids kind of take over, you know? And I watch from a distance, but it's just watching, watching the teachers and the students still participate in learning through all this adversity has just been been wonderful. So I wanted to take some time to really thank the 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 teachers and the students for everything that they're doing and how they're persevering through through all of this. And I want to also use this student, this board report to let students know that there are resources available and remind parents that there are resources available. So if you think that your student needs to talk with somebody or if they could benefit from this counseling services that are provided by AUSD, please reach out. You can reach out to teacher or principal. If you reach out to a board member, we'll point you in the right direction. Just if there's, if you need any help from us, please reach out so that we can get you the services that you need and keep students as safe as possible. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Dos. Important stuff. Trustee Hinckley.
I'll try to be super quick. First, I'd like to thank the U.S. Department of Agriculture for continuing to allow us to offer free meals to all children who show up. That was a huge area of concern for many of us that we wouldn't be able to continue doing that. So and I appreciate the district sending a text update quickly to all the families saying that we're going back to how we've been operating over the summer where anybody who shows up, any kid who shows up can get a meal or multiple meals. So yay for free food. And secondly, that proposition 15, I'm gonna say this every day until November 3rd, is on the ballot and we really need it. And this board has endorsed it. And please look out for opportunities to get involved and educate people about it because we're going to begin to see the campaign against it because they always have more money than we do. So let's get it across the finish line in November, among other important elections.
Thank you very much, trustee Hinckley. I'd like to move to our student board members' report.
Yep. So the high school counseling department is hosting a senior college application night via Zoom for seniors and their families. This was sent out in an email that had the Zoom link as well as the information and time. If you didn't receive it or you don't think you received it, try checking your spam folder. Because sometimes these these emails do end up there just based on the AUSD tag. Other than that, the the high school library is also serving students during distance learning. Students are able to request up to 10 books and pick them up or drop them off between Fridays or on Fridays between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM.
AHS leadership is also hosting a new student lunch for all new transfer students on Tuesday, September 15. And lastly, the elementary school playgrounds are open for students to enjoy and specific times of when they are open are on each site's website.
Thank you very much, student board members. We'll move to item number 11. This is persons to address the board on matters not on the agenda. So if you have a comment on a item that we're going to take up here in a few minutes, you know, please participate in that discussion. But if your item of interest is not on the board agenda tonight, this is the time to raise your hand and speak. Let's see. Okay. I'll give a minute for anyone to raise their hand if they have an item of interest not on the agenda tonight. And if not, then we'll move on to our staff reports, item 12. And we'll begin with item 12-1, our special education report. See no one to address the board of matters not on the agenda? Let's go ahead and move on to staff report 12-1, special education's report.
Thank you, President Trutain. I'll go ahead and begin. The opportunity to address the board and the community with some updated information is one of the regular directives and best practices for our department. And so I do submit the staff report for September 8th and hope to be back then every month along with my new colleague, Dr. Cynthia Ortiz-Front, to update the community on what's happening in special education. Ms. N will start our presentation. Thank you. Some of the information that's going to be included here, next slide, please, Ms. N, is going to encompass truly a couple of different areas that are key for us moving forward this year. The first area is staffing. We mentioned, and of course, we had action tonight, the director of special education. Not only has that candidate been identified, but of course, the recommendation was consented to tonight. And we do welcome our new special education director. As you know, this position has been filled by a number of people over the past calendar year. Most recently, myself as the interim director. And I do want to thank the board and the community and Dr. Wells for seeing that this was a necessary position to fulfill a lot of the components to special education in general, but specifically during school closures and how complicated special education services and practices are under COVID and school closure conditions. It was the, really, the the best move forward was to hire a director of special education so they could commit 100% of their time to those duties as opposed to myself, who was splitting them up between a couple of different positions. And so I do honor and I appreciate the opportunity to serve the special education community. And I will continue to do so as this director and the department will still be in my jurisdiction as your executive director of student services. The open positions that we still have to fill in our district are primarily with our two school psychologists. Right now, we have a total of four full time school psychologists in the district. That's what we require to serve the students and the duties that are theirs. However, through a series of circumstances, we are down now to just two school psychologists who will be here for the rest of the school year. That means we are too short. We tried advertising for them. We did do some interviews. We were not successful in securing as many school psychologists as we needed to, although we do welcome our school psychologist Catherine Day, who's helping out at the elementary school this year. So what we've had to do is we've had to contract out for those two positions in particular. There was one other position that we contracted out for, and that was a speech and language provider at Cornell Elementary. So the shortage of qualified special education staff is certainly something that Albany Unified School District had to contend with this year. And we are, again, using outside contracted agencies to fill some of those gaps. But again, we're down to just needing two school psychologists to have a complete staff. A big question about our paraeducators and how we're staffing them and of course, how we're using the staff that we currently have. So a review of the paraeducator staffing, it continues during these first few weeks of the year. We continue to work with human resources to identify areas of need. As we get into the school year, we are discovering what some of the strengths and some of the gaps are when it comes to bringing back our paraeducators. What we know is one of the strengths is being able to assign our paraeducators to those classes and those teachers in return, who are serving our students from the very first day of the year as opposed to the spring, which led to some gaps in even having paraeducators first identified in terms of their technology capacity. And then second, their capacity to work with students. So we continue to work to see exactly under this model, how we're using our paraeducators to the best abilities of them as well as to the capacity that we need them for to fulfill students' IEPs. And right now, it's it's not a match. It's slowly working towards the, let's say, vision of how we can fully use our special education paraeducators. What's gonna have to come, though, in between would be a couple of things. One would be an uptick in professional development. We're gonna talk a little bit about professional development later. The other piece, of course, is working with human resources in regards to safe working conditions and being able to access, let's say, even under a technology umbrella. My paraeducators, for example, are working, let's say, in breakout rooms right now under the jurisdiction of a classroom teacher. But we do not have the facilities, meaning we do not have agreements or we don't have platforms where paraeducators can work with students alone without having the classroom teacher be the teacher of record, let's say, for example, on a Zoom call. Our paraeducators right now are just working with our breakout rooms when they're supporting students individually. But this is also in the general education environment as well. And so we're happy to say that we're making progress, but we still don't have the best match when it comes to how many paraeducators we have and how we're using them to the utmost capacity and to the best ability when it comes to efficiency. Next slide, please. We'll talk a little bit about overall program updates. We've been able to engage our staff. In fact, we had some staff training for engaging families and students when writing their individual continuity learning plans. Again, that continuity learning plan is for all students who receive special education services. We had some in-depth training at the beginning of the year. We had some sample continuity plans from other districts that we took a look at. We have the expectation and the support of our staff members in terms of their steps to take when drafting these continuity learning plans. The number one suggestion and support was reach out and have conversations with your families and students to see what worked and what didn't in the spring. And then to turn that into an individual continuity learning plan for all students. We continue to provide training. We're going to be giving the staff some feedback. And in conjunction with our new director of special education, we'll be supporting our staff as they draft a continuity learning plan for all of their families and students. A big area is assessment as well. So we're starting to research some options for providing either remote or in-person assessments, perhaps with contracted providers. The same scenario is playing out, of course, with our bargaining members when it comes to in-person platforms or in-person opportunities for assessment as well as instructional delivery. So one of the things that we have looked into would be to hire contracted providers who are willing to come in and do some in-person assessments. And and we hope to have some sort of agreement shortly, especially when it comes to those who can attend IEP meetings who have knowledge of not just psychoeducational assessments, but academic assessments. And so we're doing our research there to provide those when needed. But we're also working with our current personnel, looking at a variety of platforms and validity tools that would be able to be sufficiently used online. For example, if you could ask questions over a Zoom call and get responses from someone you're assessing. That's one particular platform that could be used for students moving forward. Other than that, as I mentioned in a previous slide, sometimes we have to go outside to contracted providers in which case we are looking at that for assessments in particular. We continue to provide the best practices and suggestions from districts in our community and our SELPA, our special education local planning area in terms of how to provide assessments. I mentioned this before, we conducted some paraeducator training on Zoom, helping students succeed and how the paraeducators can specifically help deliver those IEP services via Zoom or other online platforms. Like I mentioned before, ensuring that the security is there so that there is a classroom teacher who is working with a particular group of students in the breakout session that is supervised by the classroom teacher. Moving forward, we would like to be able to provide paraeducator training on a number of different platforms, of course, when we're back in person. But right now, we do have to focus in on how can paraeducators best support our students in a virtual platform? And we are making, I mentioned, pro- And we are making, I mentioned, progress, but we don't have the best match quite yet. But we do hope to persevere so that paraeducators are able to support all students on a platform that makes sense for them. Dr. Wells also mentioned earlier the idea of having hubs or having in-person instruction. And again, those two criteria, the county guidelines being met as well as our local bargaining units being conferred with and having those two match up then will lead us to being able to provide more in-person or at least some in-person instruction. Our next slide. So I'd love to end with some celebrations. It's been a, it's been a long, and in fact, it's been an even longer weekend, but it's been a long, hot summer, a long, hot weekend. And it's time to kind of breathe and really have a lot of celebration time spent, not just with the classroom teachers, but with our students and with our parents for what we have accomplished now that we're on September 8th in our third week of school. So this has been said before, but again, welcoming our new Director of Special Education can only strengthen our district and our department. I've been privy to a number of conversations and even peeked in on a couple of Zoom meetings. The teaching and the learning and the growing together continues as we celebrate the start of the school year and the preparation that was invested this summer. Again, I can't thank enough the incredibly hardworking staff as they prepared for the school year. There was extensive professional development and extra hours spent, not just with our certificated staff, but with our classified staff. Everybody who knew that we had to make progress and make stronger what we had started in the spring should and will be commended as we move forward this year. I can only see a strengthening. The only thing I think that is preventing us from really having the ability to provide what we need for our students is the unknown. It's the COVID conditions. It's how are we going to prioritize keeping our staff and our students safe and at the same time, providing a quality education? Since it's uncharted territory, it's hard to know how to do it right every single time. But I'd like to end then with, again, commending our incredibly hardworking staff, our supportive parents at home who are going above and beyond to make sure that their students are accessing what they need to with the limited resources that we provided them. And again, working towards that collaboration, I think, will only strengthen then the experiences of our students, those who have IEPs, those who have 504 plans and those in the general education, those in the general education environment, who all are due a quality education.
Thank you, Executive Director Ritchie. I want to open this to Board Trustee. Questions and comments now? Go ahead, trustee.
We lost our raise hand option, but I guess I'd like to hear more about what this match problem is that you highlighted a couple of times. Is it that we have paras who are not yet able to use Zoom effectively? Or that we have students who need something that can't be met by a Zoom interaction? I just would like, I guess, a little more clarity about what exactly that means and what's, what you mean when you sort of hint at not being able to use the staff effectively and match staff with students. And I guess a piece of that is what's happening to the students in the meantime?
Great. I'll give you an example for the purposes, let's say, of comparing pre-COVID supports that a paraeducator could provide when you have a teacher of record who is working with a number of students and they can start to delegate who is going to be working with that particular paraeducator. That paraeducator could be in a different area of the classroom. They could be perhaps right outside the classroom in a small table situation. It's difficult then to replicate that, especially if I'm going to be really needing some quality time with that one particular student in a one-on-one manner, for example, with a paraeducator. And sometimes even paraeducators are assigned to be a one-to-one support system for that student. Online, however, you have the restraints of having a classroom teacher be the host of a Zoom meeting. And if you needed a paraeducator to work with a particular student, you would have to have them go to a breakout room and they would be working with that student. But it can be difficult, especially given the parameters that we have for synchronous versus asynchronous time spent. Right now, for example, our paraeducators would only be working with our students during the synchronous instruction, which if it's limited, then you can see the rest of the day. If it's asynchronous, or even in particular on Friday, which is all asynchronous, you've given up some of that time that's allowed for a paraeducator to work with that student. Again, pre-COVID, you've got bell-to-bell opportunities. You know, if you start at first period and end at seventh period, I have paraeducators who are able to work with students in a variety of ways and a variety of times. But with the current schedule, right now, our paraeducators are working with our students during synchronous experiences, but not asynchronous experiences, since during those times, we don't necessarily have a classroom teacher who's able to be the host of that Zoom room and then be able to supervise the paraeducators while they're working with students. And you can see where it might even be more difficult if I have a one-to-one paraeducator working with a student. Again, if I'm only working with that student during synchronous periods of the day, something's got to give and that synchronous time could be their time in the general education. And so that would be a really hard trade-off to pull a student from the general education setting so that they could work with their paraeducator during that synchronous time online. So there's just a lot more to think about when it comes to how are and when are our paraeducators available to work with students?
Can I just ask a quick follow-up? So are, do we, though, I mean, that sounds very challenging, but do we have paras who are actually being paid during that asynchronous time? So is the challenge a logistical one of figuring out how you meet student needs during that asynchronous time? Or is the issue that we don't have paras actually working during those time periods?
Good question. We do have paraeducators who are working during those times, but it's not with students. It would be, for example, supporting the classroom teacher with some note-taking. Maybe they're watching a recording of a lecture that a general education teacher presented and they're drafting some notes or a study guide related to that one particular lesson. So the asynchronous times are being used primarily to support the classroom teacher with different endeavors, but it's not, unfortunately, an opportunity for us to have that paraeducator work with students.
Is that an opportunity that can be explored or you think it's too challenging?
I would need to refer with, confer with Human Resources, perhaps, and Dr. Wells to see how we could redefine that time. Right now, we're limited to having our paraeducator support students during the synchronous instruction. And again, I mentioned that sometimes competes with their other scheduling.
And it's important to note, I'm sorry, my apologies. It's important to note that paras have to be supervised by teachers at all times. It can't be independent.
I'd like to move to Ron.
Thank you. I, that's exactly what, one of the, of the two questions I wanted to ask you about, Executive Ritchie, which is, um, are we either the county or the state to see if there's going to be any flexibility during this COVID-19 period and distance learning, where there may be some flexibility about that exact rule or law that you're referring to, which is that the paras can only work under the, the direction of a classroom teacher? Is, has there been any outreach to the state to see if, if there, if there is any kind of creativity or workaround that kind of thing so that we can really use, have the paras work more directly with the kids throughout the day? And so that's one question.
There might be options to explore. I would also need to bring that back to a local conversation since I think that some of these factors do include the comfort level of a paraeducator working with students who are on, in a one-to-one situation. So I would have to not just check with the state, but I have to check with our, our local bargaining units to make sure that that was vetted through.
I can answer that just because I've already done all the research. There is no flexibility here with CTC and our current bargaining contracts that we went over. Myself and HR went over thoroughly. So we're kind of limited in our creativity, but we will continue to explore some creativity and innovation. But it has to be in the realm of health and safety and agreements we have and CCC requirements.
The second issue I wanted to ask you about has to do with the 504s and the IEP plans. I know that at the spring, when, when we closed the school, the schools, that those assessments for those plans were effectively stopped. And I'm wondering, I know that you've, you've certainly have talked about them in the past. And I'm wondering, to what extent have we been brought up to date? Or how long will that take to get all those assessments completed?
Thank you, Vice President DeRan, for that question. For equity purposes, we are committing to looking at a chronological order of addressing the older assessments first before moving into our, let's say, current or any future assessments. And my school psychologists, as well as the other personnel who provide assessments, those are our resource specialists, our special day class teachers, our service providers, such as speech and language. Again, we are asking them to look at chronologically, who are the folks who are, let's say, from the spring? And we hope then to be able to match the idea of having a virtual assessment or having, like I mentioned before, a contracted person to come in and provide an in-person assessment as needed. But to answer your question, we are not caught up, of course, because we are looking at our older assessments, addressing those needs first before moving into the current ones. And we're doing our best then to try to catch up to where we should be, but we are not where we should be since we're still addressing the older ones from the spring.
And would you be able to just estimate where we're at in that process? Like what percentage of IEPs or 405s have been completed, those assessments?
From the spring, we're moving forward, I'd have to say, we have not completed too many right now because the two things that have to happen, of course, is to look back and see who is due and what is due, because it could be a simple assessment or it could be something called a triennial, which has a battery of assessments. And so some of those take just a short amount of time. Some of them might take much longer. Some of them might be able to be done virtually. Some might have to be done in person. So we're trying to organize right now as best as we can so we're not missing anybody. And as we organize, we're going through and as best as we can then, addressing the older ones first. But I can tell you that that's going to be a slow process because it's not like we just came back to school and we're picking up where we left off. We're coming back to school and there's still many, many barriers to providing a full assessment or a full battery of assessments, if that's appropriate. So we are not caught up, but we are doing our due diligence. In fact, the piece about being two school psychologists short right now is also adding to the burden of the personnel who are here. Therefore, they're also kind of running into this position where they're taking over, where other school psychologists might have been able to see something through. If we're short on personnel, others are picking up that load.
I want to jump in briefly here. I appreciate everybody's effort to explore this completely and very transparently. And I'm just going to try to summarize what we're talking about, which is, you know, when the schools closed down, we were unable to do in-person assessments. And so even though our legal, our legal obligation, you know, still exists, we couldn't, we could no longer do assessments. And now, although school is open, it's open remotely for distance learning. And it's still, although you've talked about, Director Ritchie, about, you know, like the possibility of some virtual assessments, it sounds like in many cases, an assessment really requires to be in-person. It sounds like you, you mentioned briefly that maybe we could hire some, some contractors that would be willing to do some in-person assessments for perhaps some real crisis situations, but that's not going to get us through our backlog. So right now, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, between wanting to, to catch up on our IEPs and our, you know, that, that's very important work, but also trying to protect everyone's health and safety. Is that, is that accurate?
That is, absolutely. Thank you. And for a contracted assessment, it would run you about $4,000 a person.
Thank you. Other trustees, Trustee Clark, Trustee Doss, do you, do you have any questions for Executive Director Ritchie?
Excuse me, there's, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, there was a mention of, at the last board meeting, there was a mention of potentially forming a committee around, around this. And so I'm wondering if we can talk a little bit about, you know, if forming a committee is something that could be done and then how we would go about that. You know, addressing that, what was, that was mentioned at the previous meeting. I'll pause and for, for that question before I go on to the other one.
Yeah, I can report that this Thursday, we do have our second Special Education Advisory Council meeting, of which I think Vice President DeRan and Trustee Hinckley are joining me for that meeting. That one is comprised of staff members as well as parents and other district personnel. And so I can refer to that council meeting. And I'm thinking that we might need to have a further conversation about the committee and the purpose of that, if that's not the same thing that you're referring to.
Okay. And then for parents who want to participate in that meeting or receive additional information about that, how, how would they go about doing that in regards to that meeting?
The council meeting minutes, for example, can be posted under the special education website. We could probably also start to work with the new Director of Special Education, who might be interested in having a second parent education night where more community members are invited to participate. And I'd be more than happy to partner with her on that moving forward.
That sounds great. My second question was not related, so that's why I thought it was important to, you know, ask them separately and not just throw a whole bunch of questions at you. But I know that a lot of people have been kind of asking questions about the paraeducators and wanting to have a clear understanding as to what they have been currently working on and what they're going to be working on moving forward to keep us on track. My, my question is, for, like, the way that the, the way that the Zoom meetings are set up for the students, how, how are we protecting or how does it work as far as protecting the privacy of the students who are participating in the additional services? Are they in breakout, do they, does the meeting break up into breakout rooms where the paraeducators are waiting for them there for the assistance? Or does this happen like at separate times? I'm just wondering, like, if they, like, how, like, kind of just taking me through, like, kind of how that looks a little bit.
Sure. Can I read some samples from an actual teacher who gave me some feedback on how the paras are being used? gave me some feedback on how the paras are being used? And so if this helps, this might have a little glimpse into how the Zoom works. The, what happens sometimes is that the para educator will join the whole class Zoom session and then might work with a small group of students in a breakout room. For example, the general education teacher might put them into a breakout room. Sometimes the paras have joined the special education teacher for meet and greets or check-ins, especially when we're looking at social emotional supports. And then, you know, sometimes the para educators have actually met with the staff, let's say, on Zoom. You know, you would have a situation where they're also joining staff meetings, or they're joining just check-ins. And so to get some more information from the actual teacher. But for the most part, then, the, either the general education teacher or the special education teacher will start a Zoom meeting during synchronous instruction. And then the para educator will be there. And then the breakout rooms are primarily just the para educator and the student. There isn't necessarily an opportunity to, let's say, signal that that para educator is working with that one particular student, because they're in a private breakout room that's designed to be that way and not generated randomly.
Okay. Before we open it up to public comments from our attendees, and I'm queuing you to go ahead and raise your hand if you would like to speak on this item. I want to ask Trustee Clark if he has any questions or comments for Director Ritchie.
Yeah, I'm good right now, President Tutain. I always like to hear from the public first. Thank you.
Okay. Right? So we will begin public comment on this item. If you're interested in speaking on the special education report, please go ahead and raise your hand. All right. See no one, and I, I'm gonna trust my other panelists to keep me aware in case I miss anyone. See no one, I will bring it back to Trustee Clark.
Yeah, thank you, President Tutain. I just want to thank Executive Director Ritchie for the report tonight and just encourage us to try to get the most out of our paras and try to get them as much work possible. I've stated many times that I wanted them to all come back, so please just continue to try to do that to assist all of our students to the best of our abilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will move on to our Staff Report 12-2, our annual construction update.
President Tutain, this is a long-awaited presentation. As you know, our construction folks and managers have been hard at work. They have met all major deadlines and come on the budget, and working extremely hard. And once again, our presentation presenter, who have done some amazing work for us and even brought in additional unforeseen millions of dollars to add on to our bonds in a supplemental fashion, is not here. So here's my commitment next time around. If they, they cannot make the presentation, it's a wonderful presentation, we would have our own staff do it, me included. But we're going to turn it over to Mr. Ben Barago to do that presentation along with staff support. So it is, with some disappointment, we don't get to see the wonderful presentation presented to the board tonight and the community. And I have to apologize for that and find out why. But we are going to have some contingencies, our third go-around.
Can we go ahead and have Director Barago step through the, the slides? Just because I think that some people are meeting in order to see these slides. And of course, Mr. Barosa can come back and give us a handle on some of the, the ones that are specifically about the seismic engineering. I think that would be in Mr. Barosa.
Are you online yet? Okay, good evening, Board President Tutain and distinguished board members and staff in the community. I actually have Mr. Barosa on the line right now, and he is attempting to log in so that he can give the presentation. So can we give a slight delay to allow him to get to log in?
Certainly, yes. That's great news.
Yeah. President Tutain, let me ask. Mr. Barago, can you ask Mr., if you can ask Juan, whether or not he'll be ready in 10 minutes? And maybe the president can go to Learning Continuity Plan and then come back to the construction update. President Tutain, what do you think?
I think that's a great idea. Superintendent Wells, let's see if we can move on to our item 13-1. This is a public hearing. I think we're also going to get a presentation. So I turn it over to you, Superintendent Wells.
Great. As we know, this year, we don't have our typical LCAP, but we do have an acronym that's the same, LCAP. And instead of Local Control Accountability Plan, it's the Local, it's the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And we have our very own tonight, Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams, who would be giving a brief overview and presentation of that plan. I'll turn it over to you, Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Wells. Good evening, Board President Tutain, board members and community. I do notice in my title, I got a little mashup here of the Local Control and Accountability Plan and the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. Both of them are LCAP. They're quite a mouthful, so I do apologize. I see my typo in the title. The district has been actively engaged in planning the reopening of schools since the spring of 2020. We have gathered broad stakeholder input to inform the development of our plans. In addition to our reopening school planning team, which was composed of over 40 parents, staff members, students, and members of our community, as well as board members. We met frequently with our site principals, who were in turn, meeting with their site staff leadership teams. We gathered input through a couple of thought exchanges. We met last week with our district's English Learner Advisory Committee. And then as recently as Thursday, we met with our repurposed Local Control and Accountability Plan Advisory Committee, which stepped in to serve as our Ad Hoc Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan Advisory Committee. Julie, if you could just slide down this page just a little. I just want to highlight the plan elements here real quick. So the plan elements that you see here have served as a blueprint for the district in providing, planning to provide a robust and engaging remote learning experience for all students. And I think will continue to guide our efforts moving forward throughout the year. I don't have a presentation, because the purpose of this item is to conduct a public hearing. And so this public hearing would give the public an opportunity to provide any final commentary on this plan, which will come back for review and approval by the governing board on the 22nd of September. So that concludes my brief introduction to this public hearing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Williams. I will open the public hearing in just a moment. I also wanted to see if we could also possibly share the screen to look at the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan template and show each of those pages publicly. Okay? And while we do that, I will officially open the public hearing on the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan for Albany Unified School District for the year 2020 to 2021. And this plan is included in the agenda. So this is a publicly available document for anyone to see or examine through our website. And of course, through our video of, of this meeting as well. Can we move down a bit? Okay, go ahead. And Ms. Shen, while you continue to scroll, I do see that Vice President Daron has a question or a comment that we can entertain now.
Yes, I wanted to ask the Assistant Superintendent, because I, I think I neglected to ask it when we met last week, which was regarding the, the students, the before and after-school program that is remote at this point. That is part of this plan, correct? I don't know if I'm confusing meetings.
So I don't. It's not named in the plan specifically, but that does not preclude us from offering the program, given that the board gave direction on the 4th of August around implementing that plan. But if you would like that plan to be included, that part of the reopening schools plan to be included, we certainly could find a place to include it, yes.
Well, it was, let me, let me tell you what my question is, and then you can tell me if it's appropriate for this plan or not. Which basically, I recall there was a discussion, maybe it was in my dreams then, about the before and after-school program, where it had been mentioned that the outreach, there's been outreach to parents, and especially the subsidized parents at this moment. And we're not getting a, a robust, full response from the parents at this time. And there was a discussion, or at least a mention, that if we don't get enough of the subsidized students to participate in, in this program, that we would move to, to parents or families that are full-paying parents. Is that, was that part of that discussion?
This probably came up at the last, at the first school-age meeting that you attended, the same week last week, but on Monday. So you didn't dream it, it did happen. And so we have a target number, as provided to us by the governing board of 84. And so our process was to begin with the families that were 100% subsidized, and then to move to families who were partially subsidized. So that's the group of families that we, we would be targeting next. And so the reason that we are not sort of creating an open invitation to all families who participated previously is that when we move to in-person childcare, we will only be able to accommodate 84 students. So we don't want to recruit 200 students and then not be able to serve them in an in-person fashion when we become ready to do that, yeah. But you didn't bring that.
Thanks for the reminder. Okay, as we scroll through this document, we might need to go, go ahead a little bit more. I want to mention that there is a particular section for pupil learning loss. And the item that was removed from the agenda, using the Achievement Network to help us assess our learning loss and hopefully eliminate our learning loss, is, is part of this document, which I believe comes back to the board on September 22nd for approval, because this must be sent into the state. So if, if we will have to have something in place to mitigate learning loss. Is that correct, Assistant Superintendent?
That is correct.
And are there funds available to help us mitigate the learning loss because of COVID?
Yes, so we did receive, and I, I believe that CBO Kim is going to speak to this in her unaudited financials report. But we did receive funding in the amount of approximately $1.6 million to aid us with mitigating learning loss. And so to this particular item that was listed here, you know, if we don't, as Superintendent Wells has pulled that contract, we will be then looking for alternative methods for assessing learning loss as we are required to under Senate Bill 98 at the beginning of the year and then throughout the year. So there are, there are other ways, I'll say, to conduct the assessment and then to implement strategies and monitor the learning loss. But that we have to do that is, is not a question. That's a mandate per Senate Bill 98.
Thank you. I think there's a few more pages of this to, that we should scroll through in order for it to be a part of this video record. And then I also see that we have two hand raised, hands raised from our attendees. And I want to entertain all public comments during this open public hearing.
Can I ask a question too? I have my.
Oh, sure. Thank you for pointing that out. So, Trustee Hinckley, would you like to ask your question before we move to public comment?
Yeah, just on this, actions, the same place we were a minute ago, the actions to address pupil learning loss. So these two rows just address assessing the degree of learning loss. And I know there's some language elsewhere that describes some of the strategies. But will there be additional rows here that identify the funds specifically to actually address learning loss, not, not just the assessment piece?
Yes.
Could you maybe, short answer, talk very, say, two sentences about what our strategies are for addressing learning loss?
So I would say that there are strategies that we typically employ. So tutoring would be an example of that. Another strategy that we use to mitigate learning loss is we have specialists that provide intervention services during the student's day. So we would continue to employ those strategies. And then I think the other, the other strategies that we might employ would be revealed to us as a result of sort of conducting the assessments and determining what strategies exactly were needed to meet the needs that are, that are surfaced through this initial period of assessment. So I think, you know, other strategies that are available to us include sort of mental health counseling services. We will continue to use those. And then also, we have invested some resources in providing supplemental instructional materials that could be provided to students. So all of those would continue to be at our disposal. And then I think we want to leave room to be responsive to what the data tells us about what our students need in order to mitigate learning loss for them.
And may I add just a little more context or backdrop? Linda Donohue-Hammon, our professor over at Stanford and our Chair of the State Board of Education, has been following, like many of us, Dr. John Hattie, extensive research. And he's our chief researcher in the country. And one of his findings is that the best way to mitigate learning loss is to have good solid assessments and intentional time set aside with data protocols for teachers to determine their next steps as it relates to letting the data guide their footsteps and providing kids what they need. And highlighting that you can't do the equity work that's necessary absent of these kinds of assessments. So we will be using those data protocols and looking at data and having teachers work in teams with principals to determine next steps, because that is the evidence-based practices that we believe are the best. And with, based on our own experience, dealing with closing achievement gap and mitigating learning loss.
Trustee Hinckley?
This will be my last sentence on this issue. But it strikes me that a lot of the learning loss that we could attribute to the pandemic, it might be because students are specifically having challenges with the remote aspect. For example, their home environment may be chaotic or not have internet. or not have internet or, you know, adequate computers, et cetera. So maybe this isn't a question for right now, but just that it strikes me that this isn't just about the kinds of strategies we use, you know, in a sort of normal situation to help children re-achieve grade level. But it may be about us trying to resolve some of the challenges around remote learning in particular. And that, that may require some more creative strategies. And I guess the last piece is just whether that means that some of these kids might be a good fit for the kinds of hubs or other support services that we're able to offer in person, even if they don't currently have, for example, an IEP or meet some of those other criteria.
Thank you, trustee Hinkley. We're still in our open public hearing. I would like to move it to our community members who would like to speak. So let's see. Our first speaker will be Miriam Walden. Please go ahead.
Hi. So I just wanted to raise in regards to the preschool and the school age children's center programs that all over Albany, there are preschools and childcare programs in session, in person, right now, every day. And this creates a situation where parents who have money are able to provide that in-person environment for their young people. And parents who are using the state subsidies that we have accepted are not. And so I think it's an urgent equity issue for us to be taking every possible step to be ready and to move towards in-person services at the preschool and in the childcare program. And the action items are to apply for a county waiver. The state has given us the go-ahead. It's the way I see it, we need a county waiver from the Health Department, and it's reasonable to expect that when other programs are up and running safely. But we need to apply, and we need to be negotiating with the unions and to bring people back and get folks into classrooms and operating. So it's urgent that the district and the administration take steps to do that and do that now.
Thank you, Ms. Walden. Our second speaker is Rachel Chatham. Please go ahead, Ms. Chatham.
Hello, it's Chapman. Hear me?
Yes.
Following off what the previous speaker said, one of the concerns that I have with this plan is there is no discussion of in-person or any sort of plan to move to in-person, should that become reasonable. I am a parent of a, of both a elementary school student and a middle school student. And I know that the concerns with 10 and under, that there are some different considerations. And particularly, I don't have a TK or kindergarten student, but their ability, what I find concerning is there does not seem to be any planning for the potential eventuality of in-person learning. I know we're not there yet, but we could get there. And if we get there and there's no plan, then it's totally useless. The other thing, someone had raised the point before, but the fact, I appreciate that there might be further negotiation needed, but the assessment tools, that is really, that is really key. I have a child who has been receiving services for both English and math delays. And while the reading specialist has contacted us and has already conducted assessments, the math specialist has not. And in the spring, we received very little communication. I have another child on a 504 plan. I have received zero communication about how her 504 plan will be implemented in this type of environment. These are concerns that I don't see addressed in this plan. But particularly, really, my huge issue is about, there does not seem to be any plan for how we will move to in-person or how we will move to hybrid, which is what was technically the decision that was made in July. I find it very concerning that in this plan, there's no plan for that, because that's supposedly the plan we're on. And I hope that someday, I know it's not today, we'll get there. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. I appreciate the comment. We have one additional public speaker, Mr. Castillo McIntyre, please go ahead.
Good evening, board. Good evening, staff. First of all, thank you for bringing in a new Director of Special Education. We're looking forward to starting our work with her soon as she comes officially on board. The, you, the staff and the board already addressed a couple of questions that we had. One of them was about how you would go about, or whether or not you were going to go about asking for waivers for in-person instruction. And Dr. Wells spoke to that earlier on. And trustee Das already asked about whether or not you would move to officially create a committee for special education for greater oversight beyond what you have currently for the meeting on Thursday. But beyond that, for this particular item, I do have a question regarding a piece on page eight of the 15 pages in the document about students receiving special education services. It talks about a developed continuity learning plan, but it's rather vague. And we would like to know what the specifics are about that continuity learning plan. Even though you might not be able to speak to it for each and every individual student that does an IEP or a 504 plan, maybe we could hear some of the details that apply generally, the general strategy for the district to execute that continuity learning plan. What it is, how you'll develop it, when will you develop it, and how will you gather feedback to figure out whether or not it is working as intended? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the, this item then, I think that what I should do is, those are all of our speakers, panelists, and attendees. So I will now close the public hearing on the learning continuity and attendance plan. And with that closure, I will ask staff if they have any final comments regarding bringing this item back to us.
Yes, I have just a couple of comments, just really quickly. So I just want to sort of summarize what I heard in terms of questions or issues for inclusion in the plan moving forward. I heard from Vice President Jerome a question about whether or not we would include our plans around providing childcare through our school age program. I heard public comment also about our preschool program related to that. I heard a question from President Trutene about, and also trustee Hinkley, about the assessments. And so, given that we are, have pulled the contract with ANET specifically, right? So there would need to be some additional details around how we plan to conduct, implement assessments and how we would use that data to implement strategies to mitigate learning loss. I heard a comment about a lack of detail around in-person learning. There is a section in the plan that addresses in-person learning, but it sounds like that maybe needs to be elucidated more before we come back on the 22nd. And then I heard a couple of questions around addressing 504 plans, and then maybe more information about how continuity learning plans will be implemented in some general ways to be included in the plan also. So those, in addition to some great feedback that I also received at our last advisory committee meeting on Thursday, and the agenda had already published with the item, I did get some feedback from that group also. So you can look for the plan to be somewhat revised when it comes back on the 22nd of September. And if I'm missing anything, President Trutene, I know you will let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent. That concludes our public hearing on our learning continuity and attendance plan. And we move back up to our staff reports, item 12-2, our annual construction update. So, Dr. Wells, would you like to try to introduce this again?
Yes, if I were in Hollywood, I'd say let's take two.
Yeah.
And I'd like to introduce to you, you all know him also well by Juan. And Juan has been a chief leader in construction and bond and making sure projects are moving along. And he has taken time out of his tremendous busy schedule to be with us tonight from afar. And so you all know who he is. So with no further ado, I introduce to you once again, Juan Barosa. Juan Barosa by way of Ben Baraga.
He, good evening, everybody again. He is on the phone, and I believe he was, he's able to talk now. Julie, can you update us on that?
I do see Mr. Barosa on the phone. There, there he is. You just need to unmute Juan, I believe. Juan, can you hear us?
Sometimes there are some glitches when a caller is phoning in. So let's hang in there for a minute and try to see if we can resolve the audio.
And as we hang it in there, Plan B would be having our Director of Maintenance and Facilities walk us through the slides so that we can have a portion of the presentation that we've been awaiting for some time.
I'll give him another 30 seconds. He's trying to get in. Another 30 seconds, it will go. Well, it appears that he's not able to get in. So what I'll do is I'll commence the presentation, and if he's able to get in, then he can take over. So this evening's construction update is a background of the, how the district has proceeded since the year 2012. The background is in 2014, the district completed its facilities master plan, which identified the facility's needs throughout the district. In June 2016, the Albany community approved two bond measures, totaling $95 million for the construction of school facilities. These were broken down into Measure B, which was $70 million, and Measure E, which was $25 million. And I must say that when you see the percentage of support, that percentage represents some very strong community support in Albany. Once the bonds were approved, a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee was established to review the bond expenditures. And I've had the privilege of meeting them, and they are a very committed, dedicated group to work with. In addition to bonds, funds, the district has been pursuing state funding for the projects that have eligibility. Mr. Barosa could probably put that in detail a little better. So the bond priorities. The reason for the bonds was to relieve overcrowding at Albany Middle School and Albany High School. There's also, there was also a need for sustainability and energy efficiency. With new construction, all new school facilities will be zero net energy-ready, as well as they will be seismically safe school facilities. That's both in a new construction and in existing construction, existing buildings. There is also a need to provide larger 24th century flexible classrooms, as well as modern technology and equipment. Under the sustainability, energy efficiency, in January 2016, the, the district created a sustainability integrated design committee to make recommendations on a statewide sustainability standard. And I must say, I, we have been meeting regularly. We have gone into a new phase. And again, this is a very dedicated group that I've been working with, and it's been a pleasure. As a result of that committee in August of 2016, the Board of Education adopted the Collaborative for High-Performing Schools, that is CHIPS, framework as a district standard. And this was the result of the group meeting in establishing these standards for the district. Funds were also, Prop 39, the Initiative Energy Efficiency Program became available and were used to partially pay for the solar photovoltaic PV system at Albany Middle School. Currently, this is almost on the verge of being connected, and we're within a couple of weeks away of having it come online. And the Sustainability Integrated Design Committee participates as a stakeholder in the design process for the bond projects. And again, it's been a real joy working with them. This is under the Seismically Safe School Facilities. In 2012, that's why we go back that far, the district competed as seismic evaluation of both Ocean View and Marin schools. The evaluation reveals seismic deficiencies that are typical of this construction type, which is concrete masonry and the age of the schools. When the schools were built, they were designed at that time to meet the building code in effect. And therefore, the, those buildings are still considered to be code compliant. Now, the main concern is potential separation of walls from the roof during a large earthquake at magnitude 7.0, making the buildings unusable. Now, what's interesting is the evaluation noted that the original construction quality is excellent. And the evaluation also noted that building collapse is very unlikely.
Director Baraga, can I interrupt briefly here?
Yes.
I think we might need to move our screen up a bit. Wide. And I also think that we might, have we worked out the technical glitch? Is Mr. Barosa able to join us now and talk us through this?
Are you folks able to hear me?
Yes.
What a pleasant, what a pleasant voice.
Ben is doing a great job, so I don't want to interject. But I am available for questions, or Ben, if you would like me to jump in.
Yes, please jump, please jump in.
Okay, so one of the main issues with the, with the bonds was seismic safety of the schools. And, you know, there are multiple ways that you can address seismic safety in a school. And what the district moved forward with is a, what's called a voluntary seismic upgrade. There are multiple levels of seismic upgrades that can be performed on an existing school. The, the level that the district chose to proceed with is what's considered a collapse prevention and life safety criteria, which is the standard that all new schools are built to if they were brand new schools. So what that means is that the existing buildings that are going to remain will, in the event of a large earthquake, let's say a 7.0 earthquake, would perform as well as a brand-new building built to today's code. as a brand-new building built to today's code, considering the building type and so forth. And so that is one of the main components of, of the bond program criteria, which is being met, again, as a voluntary seismic upgrade that is reviewed and approved by the Division of the State Architect. And so the schools will be considered to be seismically safe, as safe as if they were new construction. On, on, one of the next slides, I've shown kind of the typical details that are included in, in the work, which are really primarily details that connect the roof to the walls of the building. Because prior, Ocean View School was built in 1973. And in, in that vintage, the seismic codes were not quite what they are today. And so to be brought up to current code, there is just a lot more hardware and connection details that have to be implemented to make the building safe. And so I know that, that, that there has been quite a bit of discussion about the seismic safety of the schools. And so maybe this might be a good point to take a pause and answer any questions that you folks might have.
So I just, I'm not being any kind of engineer or structural specialist. I just, this drawing here is an indication of basically how the, the, the Ocean View NPR is going to be strengthened with, especially concerning the roof and the walls.
Correct.
And, and are we going to do similar work at Marin? Because I believe that Marin and Ocean View were, were built in the same style and very
Right, yeah. Yes, so to answer your question, yes. What I've shown on this drawing is just like a typical detail, okay? Of the strengthening that is going to take place to make sure that the building is seismically safe. This type of work is also going to take place at Marin. And those plans are being developed now. And they're going to be submitted to the Division of State Architect fairly soon. But I guess the message to the community is that both Ocean View and Marin schools are going to be seismically safe. And they're going to be constructed to a level of safety that would be appropriate for today's code.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barrosa. Let's see. I'm not seeing any other hands from our trustees. And so I think probably you could proceed with this. I'm sure there'll be more questions at the end.
Okay, well, i- if I may proceed with, with your permission, I do have a slide on the Albany Middle School Annex, which is one of our completed projects, which I think the community has, has to be very proud of, that your school district was able to build a, a great new facility that just recently received CHIPS verification, meaning that it is one of the most highly energy-efficient schools in the state of California. And that's very recent. And the next slide is, we wanted to highlight the Albany High School Edition, which was another very successful project, which was completed on a very accelerated schedule and with a great building contractor who finished two months ahead of schedule. And this project is also under current review for CHIPS verification. Again, meaning that it will be one of the most highly energy-efficient school buildings in the Bay Area. And moving on to the next slide, it's the Ocean View rebuild, which is a major project. I, I believe it's the largest project in the bond program. And we broke ground at Ocean View in January. And the project has been proceeding very well, despite some of the challenges that have been brought forward related to the COVID-19 situation. And has placed additional safety measures on the project. However, the project is on schedule, and it is expected to be completed on time and within the original budget.
Let's give you one.
Yes, sir.
Can you let the folks know that on time means all of our Ocean View students will be in their new school for the fall semester? I think that's important to pause and highlight.
That's correct. You're exactly right. The expected completion date is July of 2021, meaning that the district would have about a month to move in, you know, power up the phones, move in furniture and so forth. And so we expect to achieve that or do better.
That is really amazing. And we're going to have the Marin construction begin as soon as this school year ends, I believe. So June and July, we'll have crews on both sites.
Yes, yes. And, and so the last project on, on the bond program is, is the Marin rebuild, which is currently in, in the design phase. It, the project has been submitted to the Division of State Architect a couple of weeks ago. And so we're on schedule. And, and I've heard loud and clear from Board President Trutain and Superintendent Dr. Wells, that schedule is very important. And so we, we have a very motivated team that is moving the project forward on track. And there's been a lot of input from the community members who are on the stakeholder committee. And you know, their input has been greatly appreciated by me and by our team. And, and in a sense that they are making this project better, just by their input. And so we look forward to breaking ground in June of 2021. And it will be an 18-month construction schedule so that students could occupy a brand-new school in January of 2022.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barrosa. I, I do have some questions, but I want to open it up to the, to the board so that we can hear any questions or comments first from them.
I'd be happy to take any questions.
Certainly, Vice President Duran?
First, I would like to say this is so exciting and so much work has been done. We've already celebrated on two occasions now for AMS and the high school edition. But we'll keep on celebrating as we, as these two more projects get, are accomplished. And Juan, I just wanted to mention that, you know, you and, and all your staff and the Sustainability Committee, which is now, I believe, called the Environmental Action Plan Committee. So much work has been done by, by the community people, their input, their thoughtfulness, their knowledge and, and their resources. And that's so, I think, exciting and, and, and something that the Albany community in general needs to know, because they have put so much money into these projects. Without Albany community, these projects would not exist. So I just want to, though, congratulate you. And, and we need to just spread out all this good cheer to the community, especially at this difficult time that we still, in the midst of projects, have lots to celebrate. And I just had two quick questions. One was about, in terms of Marin and the photo I saw. And, and that was one of my concerns about Ocean View at an earlier meeting, which I just want to raise so you can say, of course, it's all being considered, which is the, this security issue of the front of the school and any other instances.
Yes.
Could you just talk about that very briefly? Because I really can't say too much.
No, I, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your comments. And you're correct in that the community has been so supportive of the school district and really provided the resources necessary to bring these projects forward. In terms of security and safety, that is one of the top priorities in the construction, both of Ocean View and Marin. And we're currently working with Terry Jorgensen in making sure that we have the best and the most appropriate safety measures in terms of lockdown, security, and electronic hardware and so forth. And so that, that is a very top priority. So I appreciate your comments.
And, and my second question has to do with the AMS solar VP panels. And how, I understand that that money came from the state. It was like special funds. And I know the other schools don't have, will have the panels, but they won't be functioning. Is that correct until such time as, as it, it becomes a system? And I want to know if there are either state funding at this point that you might know of that we could apply for similarly? Or if members maybe of the community on the, on this committee might be willing to research further about different grants?
Sure, yeah. You bring up a very important point, which, which is part of what the voters approved in terms of the bonds, being energy efficiency and solar photovoltaic systems and so forth. In the example of the middle school annex, we happen to just be honest with you, get a little bit lucky, that there was one-time money from the state of California equalling $350,000 that could be applied towards solar systems or energy efficiency systems. And so we were able to leverage those funds and layer them into the project and therefore install a solar system, which is 70 kilowatts, which is expected to offset 90% of the energy consumption of that new facility. So it, it, it's really a wonderful thing that we were able to do through the Prop 39 money. The system is supposed to be flipped on, what they call flip the switch, this Friday.
Wow, that is exciting. And I hope that the smoke clears so those panels can get some sun on Friday when we turn it on. Other trustees? Because I, I also will open this up to the community so that we can have community comment. And part of what you asked, Vice President Duran, was about if the Environmental Action Plan Committee had any ideas about how we could obtain more solar panels. And I do believe that the committee does have ideas in that direction. And maybe if any of them are listening to the meeting, maybe they will come forward and speak during public comment about some of their ideas.
President Trutain, if I may, comment on that. We are currently looking at different options to implement a solar system at Marin and possibly at Ocean View, based on budget constraints and so forth. But that has always been a top priority of the program. And we're, we're still hopeful that we will be able to bring that forward and demonstrate to the community that the taxpayer dollars are being properly spent.
Well, since you mentioned that, I, I'm very interested in the construction project, as you know. Been trying to follow school construction around the Bay Area a bit. In the East Bay Times just a few days ago. And the article, which anybody can find, it said that the school board in Fremont Unified had just passed a measure to increase the, their budget for the conversion of one junior high to a middle school. They are, they allocated $16 million more toward that project, which brings the project total up to $92 million. If you read the article, it talks about the, that DSA has very stringent rules for schools. And, you know, perhaps they have particularly difficult situation with an old building or, or something like that. But the contract is extreme because they're needing to pay $92 million to convert a junior high to a middle school. And I just bring it to the attention of the board and the community here tonight that our board, that our bond measures were for $95 million total. And in Albany, that's encompassing four projects, two additions that you went over, and two almost complete rebuilds. Can you, can you comment on that, Mr. Barrosa? What has made that possible for Albany?
Well, in, thank you for that question. The, the process that we, that, that took place for Albany is what's called design-build. And so design-build allows you, you as a district, to set a specific budget target to construct a project. And we can speak to, to the success of the Albany Middle School Annex, the Albany High School Edition, and currently Ocean View School. As if you were to look at those projects in terms of cost metrics, Albany has really performed exceptionally well in terms of cost. When you compare these projects to other projects in the Bay Area. And so I, I, I think it speaks greatly to the collaboration and to the community spirit and, and really to the collaboration that goes into these projects. And I think Albany and the, the voters and the taxpayers in the community should be really proud of what we've accomplished.
President Trutain, I'm going to toot Juan horn. It's because of great leadership and his ability to bring people together, work collaboratively, and for him to go out and seek dollars for us, that we tip our hat off to Juan Barrosa. and for him to go out and seek dollars for us, that we tip our hat off to Dr. Wells, who I'm very humble, but it's, he plays a significant role in the things that we do. And I just wanted us to take a moment to acknowledge that.
I appreciate that, Dr. Wells.
I'd like to open it up to comments from our community. If you're a community member on this call and you'd like to, on this item, please raise your hand. Right? We do have at least one speaker. Go ahead, Mr. McLeod.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Wells and staff. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you. I've been on the Sustainable and Integrated Design Committee now for about eight months. It's really been a privilege to be a part of this committee and really great to be working with the design-build team and the school staff on these. Basically, what I've been working on is the Marin School project. And it's just been great to, I'd like to also mention I'm on the City Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm a lot aware of what city goals are in terms of climate action plan and that sort of thing. And it's just really great to try to be able to integrate the new designs and ongoing operations with city climate action plan goals. So this is something that people have been thinking about for a long time and it's really great to see it happening now. And in terms of Marin School, I'm very pleased with the process so far. And I'd like to just weigh in a little bit on the solar issue. We have been looking at various options for working with private companies that can basically install the equipment at no cost and it becomes a leasing arrangement. I think we're going to need some help from the staff at the district to implement some sort of request for proposals. There's a lot of, you know, technical work that will have to be done to implement something like that and get proposals. But there is a way to work with private companies to get solar panels put on full roof. The County School District has done it. They've put panels on multiple schools, over parking lots, et cetera. And it's a great success. And it's a way to get panels in place now and reduce costs to the district. So I think it's really worth looking into. It will reduce energy costs. And it would be based on studies of how much energy use there is and how much savings there could be. But I think it's a net win for everybody. In the absence of state grant money or money for that, it would be a great thing to explore. And then the only other minor issue at Marin would be just getting us over the hump to a...
And let me ask again, do we have any other public speakers that would like to, that would like to speak about our construction update? Not seen any further speakers. I can bring it back to Mr. Borosa, Director Borrego, and for any final comments.
Oh, President Trutain, I just want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to give an update and reassure you folks on the board and the district leadership and the community that the taxpayer dollars are being put to great use. And I'm very proud of the work that we've done and very proud of our partnership and anticipate some great new schools.
Thank you so much. I think that the, the additions that have been finished so far have, have shown us the, the quality of learning that can happen when you have good, clean, large, airy classrooms. I look forward to seeing more projects in it.
I do have one, I do have one final comment. And that's the fruits of the effort and dedication of the district in that, oh, the middle school annex project was given an award by the Pacific Coast Builders Conference, and it won what's described as the Gold Nugget Award. And these were projects that were submitted throughout the country. And Albany was recognized under the education category. And so, again, it was the result of all the effort that the district has put and the community has put into setting a high standards for our buildings, and it shows.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Borrego, does that mean we get a gold nugget or something we can use for our facility?
That would be nice.
Thank you both so much. I think it's time for us to move on now. To our Item 14 Review and Action. Item 14-1 was pulled, so we moved to 14-2, our 2019, 2020 unaudited actual financial report. So this is how much money we actually spent and received last year.
President Trutain, that brings us to our CBO report, to do just as you described, what did we budget and what did we spend and what's the difference? And so I bring to you our own CBO, Jackie Kim.
Thank you, Dr. Wares. Good evening, board and Dr. Wares and community. This is fiscal year 1920 unaudited access financial report. Julie, if we can move to the presentations. See, I'm gonna try. So what makes this report so special? So I bring on four major reporting annually to the board: budget adoption, first interim report, second interim report, and unaudited actual report. And this is only report that we report out the true cost, true revenues and the true expenditure, the extra cost and revenues. The other three reports are projected numbers, the budget number. So this is one of the kind that it gets really reported out with the actual numbers. So 1920 unaudited access. By September 15th of each year, school districts are required to submit unaudited actual report to the county of education. And this report will be audited by the district independence auditors and report out to the board in January. So again, since this is the only report that we report out the extra revenues and expenditures, this report will get audited by the auditors. Okay, so the impacts to 2021. Closing of 1920 books affects the beginning fund balance of 2021. Means now we are in September, we have started already 2021 year. So far, we didn't have the beginning balance to start with. But with this actual report for 1920, now we have all the carryovers and we have the beginning balance for 2021. Okay, so these extra balances for all fund, along with the balance in accounts, are updated and adjusted. And this adjustment will be seen on the first interim report. And grant and other carryover funds are posted for the new year, which is this 2021, after the board accepts the unaudited actual report this evening. Okay, so 1920 financial highlights. Everest daily attendance. The extra ADA was 3,484, which was a decrease of 68 ADA from 1819. And district gets funded based on greater of adjusted prior ADA or the current year ADA. So for us, 1920, we get funded based on 1819 ADA. So I know you may heard of, oh, we actually lost 96 students. Well, that is enrollment. So district has a decrease of 96 students from 1819. However, district attendance rate was increased about 0.77% and shows 97.15% in 1920. So general fund for the cash balance, we have ended our general fund with 4.9 million. This means also that district will have to explore cash borrowing options due to cash defer starting in February. So starting in February, we are going to get less money. It doesn't mean that we have a less budget amount. It just means that the cash got deferred to the following years. So by June, we will have to borrow the money from either county treasury or the county office of ed, what issue a trend, and to meet our payroll expenditures and all other operating expenditures in June. Okay, so let's look at unrestricted general fund for 1920. So this first column or the second column estimated, this is the projected, what are the budget numbers? And on audit in the next column is the actual numbers that I'm presenting this evening. And the last column is the variances. So revenue and expenditures, so subtotal is the difference of those two. We have a difference of 38,000. Let's move the next line item, contributions and other sources. And so we projected that we are going to spend about 7.4 million. But in reality, the actual numbers, we have contributed about 7 million to other fund or other restricted fund. So the difference is about 425,000. So in total, we have an increase in fund balance of 386,000. And we are going to get more details of this 7 million contributions and the variances are 425,000. Okay, so this is the table for the general fund contributions to the restricted programs and the restricted funds. So this is necessary to cover restricted programs expenditures in excess of revenue. So the first item, general, special education. The general fund funded about 4.6 million, ongoing major maintenance expenditure item about 1.8 million. And, and these are all, of course, state and federal mandated programs with those S-ROCs. Okay, now we move to Albany Children's Center. We contribute about 375,000. Food services, 80,000 and others, which we pay for our portables at elementary school sites and other Title I, Title II and III programs. So again, I like to look at this again because this is really how we, our general fund is consist of. Also, this is, as you can see, those are state and federal mandated programs of those special ed, ongoing order list of items, except those Albany Children's Center. Okay, so we are going to move to the next slide. So the highlights of the changes. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a variances of about 425,000 in those contributions. The first item, ACC before and after school program. So we received additional funding of 175,000 on July 1st, 2020, 2020, for 1920 years. So this helped offset its deficit by 175,000. So it reduces the deficit to 375,000 rather than 550,000. So that was a one big item. The next item will be, the district will be receiving the learning loss mitigation fund about 1.6 million, which can fund the school breakfast and lunch program, which is our cafeteria programs. So the district general fund contributed about 80,000 rather than 240,000. So there you can see about 160,000 less that general fund has to contribute. The last item. So due to COVID-19, our student came back from non-public school and other contracted agencies for the special education no, no longer provided in-person services because it was, we are in sheltered in place. So this also reduced the cost for transportation and materials and other therapy courses. So the contribution from general fund was also reduced by about 90,000. So all of these items totaled 425,000. So our total expected general fund contributions to ACC program, food services and the special education was reduced by 425,000. Okay, so this is a historical data of our finances, general fund unrestricted. Again, it is important to focus on unrestricted money because we don't have a lot of control over the restricted fund. So this is where we really talk about structural deficit and we address any reductions. This is all happening in unrestricted money. As you can see, we still have a structural deficit and there is general fund reserve percentages. How this is calculated is we take unrestricted general fund, fund balance divided by total combined expenditures, the general fund expenditures. So in this case, for 1920, you will see about 6,375,000 divided by, I'll show you the next page, about 47,535,000. So that's how we calculate our percentages for the reserve. Okay, so this is again the combined general fund, but we really want to focus on unrestricted. And so here we have the total general fund. I like to point this out, expenditures of 47.5 million in total expenditures in our general fund. So other than this general fund, district administrators, another about nine other funds with expenditures totaling about 49.6 million. So general fund of 47.5 and other funds of 49.6, we have about 97 million expenditures this year. So that's how much the money is coming in and out for the district annually. Okay, so here are some other funds. We are the administrative unit for SEPA in child development fund, which is ACC programs and food services and other construction fund. And this is the fund summaries of other funds. So again, SEPA Fund 10, this is a path through account, which means Albany Unified, since we are the administrative unit, we receive all the money for other SEPA districts, Emeryville, Pittmont, Alameda and Berkeley in Albany. So we get all the monies to our account and we distribute those money to all other school districts of those five school districts. So you will see there's no net activities because about 18 million came in to Albany and we allocate those 18 million out. So that's why you don't see any transactions here. And again, we have all other fund. I like to look at this Fund 21 Building Fund. This is where our constructions, expenditures and revenue get recorded. And so we had about 17.5 million of expenditures last year for 1920 for our constructions, building Ocean View and maybe finishing up the high school addition. And we have a little bit expenditures of the Marin School rebuild. So another thing I like to point this out here is we have unissued on bond at this point about 27.5 million. Measure B, we have nineteen point five. Measure E, we have about eight million. So we'll have to issue the rest of the bond sometime in spring two thousand twenty twenty one. To be able to pay for all the Ocean View, Ocean View and Marine School Rebuild. Okay, so it's coming soon in few months. I'll be working with our bond groups sometime in December and I will get to bring it to the board sometime in February or March. So that's the plan. Okay, so now the next steps. Continue to monitor enrollment again, because this is where we get our funded based on ADA. And we will work with budget or the budget committee to continue to identify ways to balance the district's budget in alignment with community needs and priorities. And we will communicate to the community stakeholders, including our labor partners about our fiscal situation and strategies to balance the district's budget. The final steps for nineteen twenty. This report presented this evening will be submitted to ACOE and the state and district auditors. The final financial statements are contained in an annual independent audit, which will be presented at the January board meeting. And the next item, there are COVID nineteen for nineteen twenty twenty. And this is now time for questions and answers. And this presentation is posted on the website as well.
Thank you very much, CBO Kim. I open it up to questions.
Yes, Trustee Hinckley.
Thanks. So first, I want to say it's great news that we have a much, much smaller deficit than we thought we were going to have at the end of nineteen twenty. And you've explained why that picture looks, excuse me, it looks different than when we spoke. I don't remember which meeting, maybe June or July, when we were concerned about some of the impacts that the pandemic had had particularly on our preschool budget and food budget. And possibly some other items. But I am actually comparing some of these numbers to the second interim presentation that we got in March, which was before we had any of those concerns or before we had those numbers. And it seems like actually we are, there were a lot of areas in which our spending is much, much lower than we projected it would be before the pandemic. And so I'd be interested in hearing some of that explanation as well. So for example, in March, our projected employee benefits totals were eight point one million dollars. And now our actuals are at seven point six million dollars. So that's a half a million dollar difference. And the salaries are also lower than projected, but not actually by very much. And then we spent much less on books and supplies, which you explained might be partly because of the pandemic. But there are many areas in which we actually spent a lot less than we were thinking we would even before the pandemic. So could you explain some of that? Because I think we want to always be sure that we're keeping our budgets. You know, I know you've done a lot of work to make sure that our actuals are close to our projections. And it seems like in this case, we're, we also have quite a, quite a difference, even taking the pandemic out of the picture.
Sure, so those numbers for the second interim is, you are right, you are correct before the pandemic. So I will have to go back and look at those second interim report and I'll actually put on notes, I will get back to you. But usually when we compare, I guess in this report, usually we compare with the finer budget, which is estimated actions. And this actually reflects those pandemic numbers, right? Because this was presented or worked on it in May. So for the second interim report, I will go back and take a look at it and I will have to get back to you. Because those are something that I haven't done the research from the second interim, which is the number of as of January thirty first. So about half of the year, we had a budget numbers. So then it might be some variances there.
Yeah, that'd be great. So I'm looking at the, yeah, the projected year totals as of January. And partly what, I guess why I'm asking about the benefits is partly because it is a really big difference. It's half a million dollars. And also because we had some of this issue in the previous budget where we had over over budgeted for benefits, leave and so forth. And so it would be, it would be interesting to know if that's some of what happened again. Because half a million dollars is a lot for us. So maybe the next report could include a sort of assessment of how closely our nineteen twenty budget lined up with what we actually spent in the areas that aren't related to the pandemic.
With the second interim report, right?
Yes.
Sure.
Great.
Thank you, Trustee Hinckley. I have a question, which is, CBO Kim, on your financial highlights slide, you noted that the district will have to explore cash borrowing options there at the bottom. Can you tell me about the timeline for that? I assume that some of the state's deferrals have an influence on our need to borrow money. I'm of course interested, you know, when you borrow money, you have to pay interest. So of course that concerns me in general.
Sure, so for us, I actually ran the cash flow statement projections. We will be good until May, but June will be our lowest bottom point. Because for the state, we don't get any funding in June. Hundred percent of our funding that we were gonna get in June will move to July. So for us, it's going to be very short timeframe because we need to get funding available before June. And then we will be able to make all the payment in July. Because we will get the money in July and we will be good to go. So even though the cash defer starts in February, the district will be able to make all the payroll expenditures and other payment up till May. So we just need to really work on those like a month or two in June. And I will have more information to you once I have a meeting with the county in next month.
Great, thank you very much. I'm so glad to hear that if we do have to borrow, it sounds like it will only be for a short period of time.
That's correct.
Great. Any further questions from the board? If not, I'll move it to a public comment on this item. Not seen any trustees raise their hand. Happy to let anyone who's listening to make a comment on this item. Seen no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board and ask for a motion.
I will move that we accept the twenty nineteen twenty unaudited actuals financial report.
I second. I heard a couple of seconds there. Ms. Shen, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Student Board Member Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Member Mala.
Yes.
President Trutain.
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley. Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
Thank you, board. The motion passes unanimously. And we move to item fourteen dash three. Amendment to agreement for design build services for the Ocean View Elementary rebuild project by and between Albany Unified School District and C over a company.
I will turn this over to, I think this is, yeah, this is Ben Borrego. And have Ben Borrego speak on this.
Good evening, President Trutain and distinguished board members. We're asking the board to approve the amendment to the agreement for design build services for the Ocean View Elementary rebuild project. This is amendment number four to the agreement. And the scope of work under this amendment is broken down into three categories. Design enhancements, energy agency requests and unforeseen conditions. Under design enhancements, we have change order request six point zero one. And this is our design enhancements to the Seawing. This will include exterior painting of the building, new stucco at exterior soffits. Replace existing concrete walkways to meet ADA requirements. In the classrooms, we're adding additional whiteboards. Short throw projectors in the SDC, ELD and reading classrooms. New casework is going to be added as well as electrical rerouting in C one oh six. This additional cost is eighty one thousand five hundred and fifty three dollars. Under change order request twenty two point zero one, this is hazmat removal in the Seawing. This work was required because the layout of the existing Seawing was significantly reconfigured, which required the removing of existing finishes. This work was not included in the original contract and needed to be tested for hazardous materials. Hazardous materials were found and as well as there was existing mold in the HVAC air ducts. So the air ducts were removed, the hazardous materials were abated and disposed of. This cost was eighty seven thousand seven hundred and eighty two dollars. Under change order request twenty three point zero one, this is the NPR building. It was requested to provide a new sports floor. And as part of the removal process and which is common for these types and age of existing floors, it was tested and mercury was found to be present. The existing floor was removed and disposed. And this was an additional cost of seventy five thousand three hundred and ninety six dollars. The total for the design enhancements is two hundred and forty four thousand seven hundred and thirty one dollars. Under agency requests, we have change order request fifteen point zero one. And that is for the replacement of an existing clay sewer pipe that added up to four hundred and ninety feet. This clay sewer pipe was not suitable to be able to connect to the city of Albany infrastructure. And so it was, it's needed to be replaced with steel pipe. And the cost includes the extraction, disposal, refill and compaction. This work will cost forty one thousand nine hundred and three dollars. Under the unforeseen conditions, we have change order request seventeen point zero one. And it, as well as eighteen point zero one, are identical in wording. Other than they cover two different time periods. Seventeen point zero one is for April and May. And eighteen point zero one is for June. And these are described as COVID nineteen site costs. And they are directly related to the Alameda County Shelter in Place Order. What this provides is additional health and safety signage, daily disinfecting of the areas that employees are in. Additional PPE and additional training and daily meetings to review the latest protocols regarding COVID nineteen. In addition to that, there's additional onsite documentation. And a onsite COVID nineteen safety officer is needed to be on the site each day. For May and June or April, May, excuse me, the additional cost is twenty four thousand four hundred and two dollars. And for June, it's sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Change order request nineteen point zero one, that is to recompact additional two feet of site soils. And this was required because on the original drawings, it showed a depth of two feet. But it was discovered that it was actually four feet. And so this is to cover that additional two feet as far as being excavated and recompacted to meet the geotechnical requirements. I must say that this cost is seventy nine thousand nine hundred and eighty nine. But this represents about half of the cost. Project manager DCA, they were able to get over reconstruction to absorb basically half of the cost for this. Change order twenty point zero one and twenty four point zero one again are COVID nineteen site costs. One is for July at additional cost of sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars. And twenty four point zero one is for sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars. The subtotal for the unforeseen conditions is one hundred fifty five thousand eighty one dollars. For a total of four hundred forty one thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. And these costs will be paid from the two thousand sixteen measure B bond funds. Any questions?
Not so much a question, but I do have a comment, Director Borrego. If you could go back to the first page. It's the second bullet point, so it's a little bit lower. The Seawing hazmat removal. My understanding is that it would have been legal for for the crew to simply close, close up the HVAC duct work, even though they discovered a hazardous material mold. It could have just been closed up and that would have been considered safe and adequate. And I really appreciate the fact that everybody involved seemed to realize that this was, this is a school, this is for our kids. And we don't just close up a hazard in the Seawing. Instead, what was done is that was removed and properly. So I'm, I'm really that kind of understanding about how, how we need to plan for the future and make sure that these buildings are absolutely as safe as possible for our children. So I appreciate what was done.
Thank you. That was a step that, yes, could have been done otherwise. But for the safety of students in the future, because what could be inactive today might become active in the future regarding the mold. So it's a very safe step to take.
And so I will make the, oh, I should ask, are there other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I will make the motion that we approve the amendment to agreement for design build services for the Ocean View Elementary rebuild project by and between Albany Unified School District and C over and Company.
Second.
Trustee Hinckley, second. And we have a roll call vote. Trustee Hinckley seconds. And we have a roll call vote?
Student Board Member Corzo Clark?
Yes.
Student, excuse me, Student Board Member Mala?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Dos?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Vice President Duran?
Yes.
And President Trutain?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Director Borrego.
Thank you.
And that brings us to item number fifteen, upcoming agenda items. Thank you, Ms. Shen. For September, you know, this is always tentative. Our September twenty second meeting at this point, looks like we'll see again the learning continuity and attendance plan that our Assistant Superintendent presented earlier tonight. We will also revisit the diversify our narrative student item that came forward. At that point, we'll be able to talk about the process and procedures necessary to move that initiative forward during this school year. We expect to hear an item on the joint contract authority for our superintendent and CBO. And the update of board bylaw ninety three twenty three, that would be the our timely and efficient meeting bylaw. And we will also hopefully see our superintendent's evaluation tool, the goals and objectives for this school year. I also wanted to remind the board that October sixth is our target date for reassessing remote or hybrid learning. And I did not hear, oh, I see Vice President Duran's hand up. Do you have a comment, Vice President? Well, you're muted.
Yep. Um, my question is, are we going to be able to do the superintendent's evaluation goal setting? If we never completed it at our workshop last week, there's still work to be done.
There's a lot of work to be done. I think it's going to need to come, go back to the board as a draft. And then, so I do not think that will come as review and action. It will probably come to make sure that all of, that everybody is on board. So to make sure that all the input has been included, a draft will need to be sent out ahead of time with plenty of lead time. It's a big document. Okay. And I didn't hear any new agenda items.
I was, are we gonna have a report or is there one coming up in regards to how things are going at the individual sites in regards to distance learning? Are there students that aren't participating? What is kind of going into that? Well, we're, I just, I know what's happening at my daughter's specific site, but I don't know what's happening at other sites and how things are going there. So is there an upcoming agenda item where we'll get a report of that or how things are going?
Superintendent Wells?
You know, this begs a wonderful question around the process for putting agenda items on the agenda. And that doesn't mean we can't answer the question that Trustee Dos has, be it in a Friday update or me sending something out. Those are two different things. But Trustee Vice President Duran, I have to respect, she has been asking for some time that the twenty first century report be agendaized. And as I begin to look at the current governor's calendar, an issue that Trustee Clark brought up and some time ago, that currently, as it reads, that if one trustee request, it's automatically done. And at some point, we are going to have to revisit that. But in the interim, we may have to honor our governance. So we can continue the conversation tomorrow at a later date, but it's something we have to articulate and get, get a handle on it as it relates to our governance, because it becomes the issue of we can prioritize, but does our prioritization supersedes our governance handbook that was approved by the board? Just something we have to address sooner than later. So I appreciate the question, Trustee Dos. We can try to get you the information and the public and some other forum. It may be a little tricky. But because you get multiple perspectives, but if you want to know specifically how it's going in classes or in general, I think in general, we can get you that sooner than later. But tomorrow, I mean, Thursday night is a good reminder, we're going to hear from our parents, some of their appreciations of remote learning two point O and some of their challenges. That might be a good time to tune in to get perspectives Thursday night. But in the interim, I could follow up with you to see what you want specifically and get that information to you.
I think I was, let me, let me say that differently, because I I would like a report from each administrator at each site about how distance learning is going. I'd like it to be a report where the administrators will present how their sites are doing, how the students are doing. And I'd like for the community to be able to comment on that. And to tell us how their kids are doing and for it to be a discussion. I don't want it to be a Friday update, but I want it to be a community discussion about how distance learning is going. And I'd like for it to be a report that comes from each administrator. They can highlight successes, things that are going well. They can highlight things that aren't going well. I don't know what will be in the report, but I would like to hear and I'd like to hear from each site so that board members can comment on it. And so that parents can also comment on it. Yeah. So that's, that's what I like to see. I would like for it to be an agendaized item and not a Friday update. And I'd like to hear from each site.
If I could jump in to just add to that, which is, and given what you said, Superintendent, that there was a process, there is a process in place. The board, I believe, has not voted on a different process yet. So meanwhile, I feel that we all should be able to continue to add items to the agenda bin at this point and then see where they fall. But meanwhile, for example, I, as you referred to my request, I made my request in October of last year and it still hasn't come up yet. So I think that in addition, we definitely need a governance meeting or however we address it to look at exactly what is going to be our procedure or process in the future. But meanwhile, we, that shouldn't stop us from throwing out agenda items.
President Trutain, I think I saw Trustee Clark jump on and I think he's trying to get a word in.
Go ahead, Trustee Clark.
I'm okay. Thank you, Dr. Wells.
President Trutain, I just, we have coming up, our principals coming to the board meeting schedule and have them have the component that Trustee Dos requested. So that folks could hear what's going on, I think is a good request. And, and then, you know, after the presentation and including those components, there's a normal Q and A. I'm hoping that would be sufficient for Trustee Dos.
Oh, okay. That sounds fine. I look forward to hearing that. And I want to thank the board for being incredibly efficient and focused tonight. And I want us all to note that I would like to adjourn the meeting now at nine o'clock as scheduled, as written on our agenda. So thank you, Board. The meeting is adjourned.
Students are very happy.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.